Five, four, three, two, one. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council to accept the agency to Westminster redevelopment agency. Today is Fridays, August 7, 2020. Right now is 10 minutes after 12. Roll call.
Here, Tom.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
All members.
Councilmember Nguyen, could you help us to salute the flag?
Yes. Please stand and face the flag where you, wherever you are. Hands over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen. Any report from City Council?
Just wanted to remind the council that today's deadline to receive everything in person to the RV and county is by 5:00 PM. That's because it's respectfully requesting that we possibly end the meeting by 2 o'clock if possible in order for us to timely get the documents to the RV if that's the case. Thank you.
All right. Oral communication.
Yes, oral communications. We did receive some ecomments, so I would just like to read the ones that we received first. Okay, first one is. First one received from Said Shah, which says, "The general feeling of reverse discrimination exists throughout the 50% non-Vietnamese citizens of Westminster. Perceptions now being discussed all over Orange County, where most hardworking ethical minority are now also being perceived as the most distrusted. Mostly people, people, mostly because of people from Westminster spreading it, and Orange County's 96% non-Vietnamese. They have relatives and friends. It stems from the fact that 70% of city taxes are paid by non-Vietnamese. While council's 80% Vietnamese and three, and they're almost all the time vote the same perception of, "I will help you win if you vote the same as generally known," and putting a submissive vote is not the answer. Measure SS was passed knowing that it would go to help the police and help all, however, 4.2 all, 4.2 all-in-one area and legalized for Vietnamese friend to avoid most taxes for 25 years. Oversight Committee just a rubber stamp and they were not given this issue of 4.2 million or tax break to be included. Then neglected West End, mostly non-Vietnamese, had the 1.1 million taken away with a false claim of no interest. One approved project by Chet had all the details and even Dick Jones was given the proposal. Another was two meetings with Ranchito's complex with Chet and a few owners' plan was a facade and pain improvement. Five owners, so it was taking time. Then trying to force Mr. Thai, city manager, just because he's Vietnamese with no prior city or city experience, Monterey Park lawsuit. Purchased smartphone, a different employee name, just a few items. So what's next? Get Tyler deep turn the city? So double dipping of paying taxes for honest business is a concern while no plan to get others to get to pay even small amount. These non-Vietnamese citizens will still do it to save the city, but the wording must be correct. Why are we so worried about selective discrimination? Warnings must include oversight that can only be to city with no appointment by council. If we do, we do plan to oppose if the wording is not correct on sales tax continuation will include old wordings from old chief lawsuit comparing the city to Bell. Letting people know about Vietnamese being distrusted all over Orange County because of Westminster City Council III and pointing out some of the above injustices. Already Vietnamese voting just Vietnamese as heard on radio and not the best candidate is turning to never Vietnamese in general circles of voting in retaliation. Extensive mailing will include 10 cities in Orange County as we do not want other cities to go through this as well. We expect 35 to 45% bankruptcies as city is 70% retail and many could not apply for the PPP grant since payroll records by most Vietnamese businesses do not exist. No major business will come to Westminster as when they do their due diligence, they first ask other businesses and our typical answer is, "You will be put out of competitive disadvantage as we have been, in fact, a $1,000,000 healthcare project with surgery center dropped when they found out." Can the city council be the council for all citizens, try by actions, or the Westminster city will suffer greatly? And perception of hardworking Vietnamese will be badly hurt due to you. And these perception take a generation to correct, and that was from Said Shah. Next speaker, next ecomment received from David Garcia. It's, says, "Members of the city council, please let the residents decide whether or not we want to vote for this tax measure. We do not want to see city services reduced and by not putting this measure on the ballot, you will take the citizens' rights away to make their own decisions. You are on the city council to represent your constituents and their concerns, not make blanket decisions for them. Thank you for taking my comments into consideration. Sincerely, David Garcia." Next comment is from Kim Phan, CEO Care Connect MD. She states, "Dear City Council, I would like to address my concerns with the city council with the current financial situation that Westminster is in. I would like to recommend that the city increase tax to ensure viability of the city. To not increase tax at this time is incredibly irresponsible as business owner and property owner of several properties. I think it's imperative to do the right thing as the increased taxes can save jobs for many of our essential workers." Again, that's Kim Pham. Next one is from Kelly Wells and states, "Good afternoon, Mayor Ta, councilmembers and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns and comments in regards to this meeting. My name is Kelly Wells and I'm a current Westminster resident. I was able to watch the special meeting on Monday. I am incredibly appreciative of Councilmate, Vice Mayor Ho, Councilmember Nguyen and Councilmember Contreras in voting to allow the good people of Westminster to simply have the opportunity to vote on this tax measure in November 2020. The fact that our democratic right as US citizens may not be allowed is shocking. Voting yes on the tax measure to be on the ballot is not support of the tax measure. It's allowing your constituents to have a voice with a vote. A voice for how and what we want from our city services. With the financial projections provided by Sherri Johnson and Aaron Backs, it's evident that the city can't maintain its current fiscal level, its current level of services without a tax measure being passed. A 1.5% tax measure is essential for the continued functioning of our city, of our services. As a Westminster citizen, I'm not willing to give up public safety, homeless liaison officers, school resource officer, response times to calls for help, fire services, EMT services, as well as park and recreation services. Are you, are you okay with allowing the good citizens of Westminster to go without these services? Because a no vote is exactly what that means. Again, I simply ask that you allow us, the people of Westminster, to have the opportunity to vote. Thank you for your time and consideration." Next one is from OC Dunn, no name given. "As a concerned resident of the city of Westminster, I am in support of the 1.5% tax increase. I agree with Sergio Kimberly and Charlie in support of the increase." This one's from Carrie Cisok. It says, "As a concerned resident of the city of Westminster, I'm in support of the 1.5% tax increase. Percent tax increase. I stand with Sergio, Kimberly and Charlie in support of the increase." This one's from Michael Wells. It states, "Dear Westminster Council Mayor, Members and Mayor. Thank you for reading this email about the state of our city. I'm a citizen and a resident of Westminster. I'm also greatly troubled by what I observed during the special meeting on Monday. What lies before you is the decision on whether or not to allow your constituents to vote on the 1.5% tax increase. What I observed was your inability to make that decision. It troubles me that you do not trust your constituents to make the decisions for themselves. Without a tax increase, we will lose the reliable services we depend on. To lose those services, crime will undoubtedly rise. Response times for fire and EMS services will increase. This will leave the city vulnerable to civil litigations, which will cost our city more financial issues as well as endanger the residents, many of which are elderly and require time responses, timely responses from those civil services. The tax increase also blocks the county, which is also in financial trouble, from taking more of our city's money. Let's be clear, your vote today is not about whether you support a tax increase. It's about whether you trust your constituents to make an educated decision about the financial future of our city. We've shown our support of our beloved civil services and will again. To keep the measure off of the ballot, this November means you choose not to do the job which you were elected to. You two are our servants, just like the officers, firefighters and other city employees. You made an oath to your constituents. It's your responsibility and our expectation that you give your constituents a voice in November. Failure to do so may determine how your constituents vote when it's time for you, when it's time to vote for your jobs. Please vote yes. Thank you in advance for your vote." Again, that's Michael Wells. This one's from Autumn McKinley. It says, "I support the proposed ballot initiative to allow voters to vote on a 1.5% sales tax increase." Thank you, Autumn McKinley, resident of Westminster. This one is from Chris Straziusso and it states, "Members of the city council, I lived in Westminster for over 30 years. I went to grade school, middle school and high school here and worked my first at the Westminster Mall, second at the Tax Center and current with PD jobs here. I still have many friends who live here and having worked for the city for 22 years, I can tell you how much the city has changed. However, one thing has remained consistent and that's, that is Westminster's commitment to the community and the residents' appreciation for all the services provided, including public safety. Westminster citizens are used to the community programs, neighborhood safety and fast police response times. Please do not take away the residents' right to vote yes or no on a sales tax continuance and increase that can continue to support that high level of service. Please represent your constituents fairly by letting them make the choice, not making the choice for them. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comments." Next one is from Linda Midendorf and it states, "I am in support of the staff recommendation for the ballot measure of a 1.5% sales tax rate increase, but would like to see a sunset date. I would also like to see action taken and reports given to show that the city staff is streamlining and researching possible revenue loss such as business license and the cash only businesses, for example. There seems to be quite a few acting employees, which means that there are folks doing the job to two people. It would be great to see these positions filled so that staff has time to research and apply for grants and various NOFA's that can help the general fund stay intact. If staff wants the public to invest back into the city, better transparency must be given. There's a never-ending complaint that the city and/or council is wasting the people's money. An example of that is seeing fleet trucks being purchased for employee positions that don't appear to need them, such as there's seen driving around the city by one person and are not Public Works or Project W. The 25-year tax break deal for the Balsa Row Hotel is another complaint. This needs to be explained to the public. I'm not sure why there was so much silence at Monday's meeting. It would have been nice to hear from Mayor Ta and Councilmembers Contreras and Doe. I'm hoping this meeting was scheduled because you now have the chance to read and think about it a bit more. Please give the people of Westminster the chance to give their opinions about the polls. Thank you very much, council and staff," and that's from Linda Midendorf. Next one is from Wayne Kendrick and it says, "I would just like to voice my opinion about our city council and their seem, and their seeming lack of concern for the city of Westminster in regard to the topic of the 1% sales tax. I cannot understand why recently they seem to have no concern for the future of the city. In fact, it seems to me that they're showing their control over the city by not allowing the 1% sales tax to be put on the ballot. Why would they not allow the people of Westminster to voice their opinion by giving them the ability to vote? It would really interest me to find out why they would not even allow us to vote on the subject. Is this just a control issue or is there some underlying reason? Thank you." And I apologize, that's from Sharon Kendrick, not Wayne Kendrick. Okay, next one is from Tammy Porter. And it says, "Dear City Council, I'm horrified to hear we are possibly losing our police force. Living in Westminster almost my entire life, I've always felt safe and secure knowing we have a great police department protecting and serving us. Without a doubt, I propose we put a measure on the ballot for a tax increase, giving us the residents of the city of Westminster our right to vote in order to save our police department. This is my right as a US citizen, as a voter and a resident of the city of Westminster. Thank you." That's Tammy Porter. This one is from Crystal Sheldon and it states, "Dear City Council Mayor and all who read this. As both a resident and employee for the city of Westminster, I've seen the benefit of the tax increase and the need to continue it. The Project W trucks have helped immensely in the city and I see them often. They've even helped in my neighborhood, but I see so many more places that need help, both on days I work and days I'm off and just a normal citizen. Our departments that help people like the police department, city yard and parks are still sorely understaffed in many areas. The citizens of our city need the services provided. If the tax measure is not placed on the ballot for the citizens to decide, many departments will have funding and personnel cut. This would drastically reduce the help the citizens get and our city will get worse. We still have a lot of transients in areas that need work. Without the funding the tax measure provides, more areas will fall into disrepair and crime. Do we want the tent cities seen in other neighboring cities in our own city? Please pass the measure for the citizens of our city to decide if the tax should be extended or not. Work for the people and let the people decide. Thank you." This one is from Betty Hayden and it states, "Dear Westminster City Council, I have lived in the city of Westminster since 1963. My husband and I bought this house as a retirement home, knowing it was a nice city, knowing it was safe and knowing that we had a great police department to protect us and our family. Hearing that there's a possibility of losing our police department is something I cannot believe. How can you expect us to have a safe city with no police? Our police department does a great job at not only protecting us, but also keeping us informed and being in the pub, being in the public, letting us know that they are out there protecting us. I'm in 100% agreement that we put a tax increase measure on the ballot and that the citizens of Westminster get to vote for what happens in their city. I'm an, I'm an American and that is my right to vote for what happens in my city. We need our police force." And that's from Betty Hayden. Okay, this one is from Scott Piker and it says, "Hello, council. My name is Scott Piker and I've been in Westminster for over 14 years. I've never been more embarrassed by our city than what, than I was watching after, than I was after watching Monday afternoon debacle. And that's saying quite a bit, given the shenanigans that we have all witnessed at council chambers over the few, past few years. The lack of leadership by the current council, all members of this current council were disgusting. Three of you just survived a heated recall campaign. I hope the people who voted for you were watching Monday afternoon so they can see how much you rewarded them of that grave decision. The people of Westminster deserve much, much better, even if 60% of them failed to realize that. Mayor Ta, you voted to abstain. That was truly coward, that was a truly cowardly act. You knew that there needed to be four yes votes for it to pass, so an abstain is the same as a no. Have some courage and vote for how you really feel and then explain to us why you're making that decision. Councilmember Doe, you literally said nothing of value the entire meeting and then you vote no without giving any reason. If you plan to vote no again today, you better explain yourself. The city deserves and it is your responsibility as a council member for you to explain your vote. Why you think allowing the city to fail into bankruptcy is the correct move? Which city services you propose to cut when the money runs out? You claim to be a strong supporter of the police force. How will you keep it afloat when the city is bankrupt? Councilmember Doe, I voted for you in every election you've been in and I have a strong, and I've been a strong supporter of you all along. Give me a reason to continue that vote. Right now it's rapidly dropping. To everyone, just a reminder that none of you are voting to increase taxes here today. You're merely deciding to put it on the ballot. Give the residents of Westminster the right to decide their vote. Put a continuation of measure SS on this November's ballot. Thank you." And then the last ecomment that I received in order to read timely into the record today is from Roger Mindrum and it states, "First, I will say I am sure I'm not alone in this sentiment. I am beyond disgusted with all five of you. Whether or not you hold a position on the subject of the sales tax rate or the financial health of the city, you all obviously were ill-prepared for Monday's special meeting and as usual, ill-prepared to do your jobs in general. You should all be thoroughly embarrassed. It is astounding because you three who fought so hard to keep your jobs here from the efforts to recall you, which you still constantly remind us that it should have been done. I, like many other people in the city, have zero confidence that you rarely ever do the right thing. I should be able to write something constructive here, constructive here. I wish I could, but all I have is disgust in my mind. Many people I know just stop commenting at these meetings because you just end up making the wrong decisions anyway, so why bother? You hit a new low on Monday with your level of ineptness. Today is just as much of a mystery as what happened Monday. I can only wish my fellow residents peace and good luck. Stay well. Sincerely, Roger Mindrum." And that completes the ecomments that were received via electronic mail. At this time, anyone who would like to speak, you can raise your hand and we'll start with public comments, starting off with Jessica Losenow.
Good afternoon. As a taxpayer resident, I feel that the 1.5% sales tax measure should be placed on the November 2020 ballot. It's fairly common knowledge that Westminster's property taxes are low compared to other cities. But what from, what I could gather from the last council meeting was that Westminster doesn't get as big a percentage of our property taxes as other Orange County cities. But even though other cities still have, they have more revenue because of their property taxes, these same cities have a special sales tax to meet their needs. And my point is that we cannot expect Westminster to have the same quality of staffing and services that other cities have if we do not have a comparable tax base. I also learned at the last meeting that the county has the power to raise sales tax. If Westminster doesn't enact this 1.5% sales tax to help its residents, I think it's fairly certain that the county will eventually create its own special sales tax. And the county is going to use that money to help county services in other cities like Huntington Beach, Irvine, Laguna Nigal, etc. If I'm gonna pay more in sales tax, I want those dollars used in my own community. It is true that Westminster is going to need to find new ways of maintaining a sound budget. And for this reason, I think it may not pass without the sunset clause. But this tax is needed to keep the city running while we work on alternative sources of revenue. A yes vote today does not mean that you are pro-tax. A yes vote means that you trust the voters of Westminster. Putting it on the ballot empowers the taxpayers to decide how they want to be taxed. So I look forward to listening to your discussion today and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next speaker is Jill Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Jill Dominguez, lifelong resident, city of Westminster, homeowner and taxpayer. I was pleased to know many of the names that I have heard comments from today. Today I am speaking up concerning this country's most closely-held tenant, the right to vote. My words today resonate to all who call the city of Westminster home. Ironically, I must stand up today for my right to have a vote just one day after the 55th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act signed into law August 6, 1965. I am appalled by the city council and its willingness to suppress our residents' vote. A city council that represents one of the most diverse councils in the entire United States. A council that represents a community that understands better than any other what the loss of democracy means to a country. And yet here we are asking a council of five people to grant us our right to vote on how we spend our tax money in our own city. This council, by its inaction to allow a ballot measure to be on the November election slate, is by de facto practicing voter suppression. Their message to us is that they know better than the citizens what we should be allowed to vote on this November. I am proud to say I was born in the city and I bought my first home here and still own it today, long before many on this council were even old enough to vote. I am speaking up today to tell you that I want the right to vote on the sales tax measure. Let the people decide the fate of our city and the future of Westminster. Let us decide if we want to pay a sales tax that provides our all-American city a means to be self-sustaining with adequate public safety while maintaining our quality of life. Give us our voice, give us our vote, place the measure on the ballot.
Okay, um, thank you. Next speaker is Kyle. Make sure I don't, next speaker is Cal Cisok.
Good afternoon. Kyle Cisok, President of the Westminster Police Officers Association. Just want to thank the mayor for calling the meeting today. And thank you to the vice mayor and council members for your confidence in putting this in the people's hands on Monday. The POA is requesting the council to put aside their differences and come together today for our community. The, this vote today is to put an extra 0.5% in the voters' hands to see where they want their money to go. The 0.5% raise in taxes is inevitable and the POA is advocating the money stay within the city to avoid layoffs and maintain vital services. With almost daily reports of inmates getting released early from prisons and jails, the citizens of Westminster deserve a fully-staffed police department. Mayor and council, you had the utmost confidence in your constituents when you were voted into the office. Please show the same confidence in your voters today and allow them to decide on their city's future. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Dan Napier.
Thank you for meeting again. I spoke on Monday. I kind of outlined who we are, what we do. And I don't think I need to do that anymore. This is Dan Napier, President of the MEA. I have four points to bring up. The first point is, we will fix this. I believe we will, I have no doubt. As much as we have come together to get you guys to have another emergency meeting, this city, we will find a way through it. We will fix it. And the way we're gonna do that is to gather. I hope that the council can be together on this as well. Number two, on Monday night, as I was driving home, I did some research and I thought about this a lot. And one thing that Diana brought up was the, the, the sales tax rates and, and what we actually pay. And so I did some research and just kind of a reminder for, for people out there. Do you know what our state sales tax rate is? The state rate is 7.25. The county rate is 0.25 currently. And with our 1% included, our city rate is currently 1.25. So what we're talking about is managing a city, 120,000 residents on, if this measure does not even go up for vote, managing a city on 0.25% of a sales tax. That's what we're talking about. It's not even a penny, a dollar. It's a quarter of a penny on a dollar. And, and we're not able to collect a lot of taxes as, as previously been discussed. Just a little tidbit. The state with the highest sales tax rate by city, Louisiana. I would have thought California, but by city, it's Louisiana. They actually tax our residents up to 4% in some cities. So it was just kind of a interesting little tidbit of knowledge. The other tidbit that I found out, it terrifies me, is that we currently have a 9.25% sales tax cap. So the county has the right, has the authority, I should say, in an emergency situation, like a pandemic perhaps, to increase the county taxes to pay for emergency services or emergency funding across the state. The county will look at what's needed in the county and provide those funds to the county. So the basically, what I'm predicting, and I don't know, because I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm one person, I'm a mechanic. Clearly, I don't understand economics. But what it appears to be after doing just handful of hours of research, is that the county can come in and raise the rate on us and take the money that our PR residents are, are paying in taxes and use it for county issues, not for city of Westminster issues. That's very concerning to me. The only way to prevent that is if we have a tax measure in place that the, the people were allowed to vote for and the people put in place, and so the people's money is going to the people's city. Third thing. A lot of you know, I, I do volunteer ski patrol and so I actually have been involved with rescues.
One minute warning.
The first thing, thank you Christine. The first thing that they do is they tell you, you have to, to save a life, you have to be on firm ground. To save the city, the city has to be on firm ground. I agree with some of the comments that we need to look at what we're spending money on. We need to take control of that. I agree with that, but fundamentally, you have to be on safe ground. And lastly, I don't think, I don't think it can be said enough. If you, the council members, are not in favor of this, that's fine. But let people vote. Don't take away the democracy. Don't take away the, the American right to vote. Let these people, let the residents, let the people that voted for you. Let the people who entrusted you with their lives, their livelihood, their community, let them have a say in the matter. Let them vote. All you're saying is that you agree that this tax measure, as hotly as, as, as communicated as been, you agree that, yeah, this is a big issue. We need to have a vote on this and we need to let the people decide. It's not for five people to decide. Don't make it about you. Make it about them. Let constituents vote.
Next speaker is Deborah Mariscal. De- Deborah Mariscal? Hello, Deborah? Okay, we'll come back to Deborah. Let's go to, let's go to Jody Boyd. Jody, are you with us?
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Jody. I'd like to start by thanking Kimberly, our vice mayor, for her courage and her tenacity at Monday afternoon's meeting. Without her courage and her tenacity, there would have been no discussion at all, and the meeting would have been adjourned. I would like to also thank Sergio for his support in helping to get something on the floor to vote on. Now, I am concerned and confused as to why we are doing all of this this week and in the 11th hour. This is a topic that we should have been discussing at regular city council meetings four weeks ago. And the mere fact that people only had 24 hours notice that went out on a Sunday for a Monday meeting, and we had a portion of the attendees and speakers, as what we have today, speaks volumes at the attempt to suppress the voice of the voters. You owe it to us, the voters, to get something on the ballot for us to decide in November. This is not your decision to vote on, but you must allow us democracy. This is not the first time that democracy has been suppressed in Westminster. I am all for whatever goes on the ballot. Moving forward, it has to have a sunset clause. You owe that to the voters. We can't keep bailing the city out over and over. So whatever we have to do, let's get it on the ballot, but there has to be a sunset clause. I can't support 1.5% because I don't think the people can afford it now, and the economy is deteriorating. I don't think that they're going to be able to afford 1.5% a year from now. Had we had more time, we could look at projections of what if we split it in the middle at 1.25%. But unfortunately, here we are. So my recommendation is, by all means, get something on the ballot. It needs a sunset clause. Let's keep the 1%. And in the meantime, we need to literally turn City Hall upside down and let every single nickel and dime fall out. It was only by doing a lot of research and asking a lot of hard questions this week did I find out that the city of Westminster does employ a third-party consulting firm to help us collect all city sales tax that's owed to us and to go after businesses that are not submitting their sales tax. Why are we just finding this out now? We need absolute transparency on our sales tax dollars. We need to see chain of custody of every nickel and dime from the transaction time to it being remitted to the state and to the state sending it back to us and how it's being spent. It should not be a black box. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go back to Deborah Mariscal. Deborah, are you with us?
I am. Good afternoon, council. Can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time. And I agree with many, many, many of the comments that have already been stated. Question. I have called on state legislators on behalf of insurance brokers for the last 25 years and have been in Sacramento, have talked to legislators and their staff. And I would expect that all of this information would have been given to you quite some time ago. So I am not understanding why we are having two emergency meetings in the, now we're at the 11th hour, which should not be taking place. There should have been plenty of time. This could have been handled, you know, weeks ago, month ago, or whatever. And I just want to make sure that people understand that if we do ask for 1.5% difference, that we are only increasing it the 0.5% off of what it is currently. We're not adding an additional 1.5%. I don't think that everybody understands that. I was very concerned about the lack of leadership on Monday. Made me very, very sad. You have all been elected to do a job to represent the people of Westminster, and quite honestly, I think you failed. It very much saddens me. The other thing that saddens me, Monday and today, there was no invocation. Quite honestly, we need prayer more than we need anything else, depending on who your higher power, your entity is. And I'm very disappointed that that did not happen. So I am in favor of continuing the sales tax, but without a sunset clause, would not vote for it. And I do agree with the last lady that just spoke. We need to clean the coffers. We need to go after, you know, businesses that are not paying their share, cash-only businesses, or whatever. We need to clean house. And you can't expect the residents of the city to pick up the tab for everything. We need to work as a team and make our city great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Steve James. Steve? Steve James?
Are you there?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, one second. Sorry. So my name is Steve James, 20-year resident taxpayer of Westminster. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for your service to our community. Putting yourselves out there, day in and day out, to run our community is not lost on me, even if I don't agree with some of the decisions you make. So I want to start by just saying thank you for your service. But I also want to say that I'd like you to allow the residents to decide for themselves whether they find value in the increased sales tax. All we are asking is that you put this forward to the ballot, not that you support the tax. If personally you're not in favor of increased sales tax, I support your right. But what I want is my ability to vote. So please support the democratic process by putting this on the ballot. This is a unique issue, as normally, we elect you to make decisions on our behalf every single time you get together and have votes. But in this case, you have the ability to allow us to decide, and that's what we're asking you to do. Please do this by placing this on the ballot. If you vote today to allow this on the ballot, all of us as residents, including all of you on the council, will have the ability to cast our personal vote in November. All of our voices will be able to be heard. I do trust your ability at normal council meetings, on normal issues, to cast the votes for us. But on this issue, because we have this opportunity, please allow us. I also want to point out that COVID-19 has changed the economic landscape throughout the world, and Westminster clearly is not exempt from that. Absent COVID-19, it may have been possible to manage the decrease in revenue that the elimination of the current 1% would create. Managing our way out of COVID will be hard enough for this city without any other decreases in revenue. This is not the time to add to the financial challenges the city is facing due to COVID-19. Your vote today to put this on the ballot is not a vote to raise taxes, but rather to allow us as residents to decide the level of services we are willing to pay for. Please, please, please allow me to decide for myself what level of services I am willing to pay for. I support the entire 1.5% sales tax. At the end of this meeting, this should be a unanimous vote. That means five yes votes. Mayor Ta, council member Doe, please join your colleagues' support of the democratic process and vote to put this on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good afternoon. Terry Rains, Westminster. Well, folks, here we are again. If at first you don't succeed, try, try again at the very last minute. There were no changes to the staff report or recommendation, so this appears to be a reconsideration vote. Why and by whom was today's meeting called, since there is no new information? Mayor Ta, trying to save face and his political career, probably. What an embarrassment. Mayor Ta, as a matter of public policy, abstentions are generally disfavored absent a conflict of interest. Members of a public body have a duty to vote on the issues before them in order to carry out the purposes for which the body was created. As this court observed in Connect versus Brea Redevelopment Agency, quote, "There is a strong public policy that members of public legislative bodies take a position and vote on issues brought before them. This policy has been expressed as the duty of members of a city council to vote and that they ought not by inaction prevent action by the board. Officials must avoid situations in which their allegiances may be divided between their personal interests and the public interest that they are duty-bound to promote. Making decisions is what officials are elected to do. It is manifestly unfair and unethical to abstain or otherwise put one's colleagues in the position of taking the heat for necessary but unpopular decisions. Abstaining, other than when is required by law, is a chicken shit cop-out, I'm sorry." And Mayor Ta, that is exactly what you did on Monday purely for political reasons. Just before a recent council meeting began, Anzian, Mayor Ta, and Councilman Wen were discussing the fact that they want pay raises and even asked the city attorney how to go about getting them. Can you believe that? I'd like to remind council that this vote is only to put a measure on the ballot and let the voters decide if they agree or not. That is why it is so important that you choose a measure that the voters can and will support. My online poll still shows 0% in favor of the measure as proposed. 32% want no new tax measure. And 14%, including me, specifically said they will vote no on the measure on the ballot if it is the recommended 1.5 cents with no sunset. You must learn from your mistakes and not repeat them. The entire burden of this must not be placed on the taxpayers, as it was with Major SS. We're not going to write another blank check for you to continue the status quo. Before asking us to make another tax, or to vote for another tax increase, staff and council must formally commit to do better, much better. Sacrifices must be made by all. Significant changes must be made now and continue to be made going forward. Ask yourselves, how can we provide quality services for less? Are there highly-paid management-level employees doing non-management-level work? Is there an opportunity to reorganize or consolidate departments within the city? Are we proactively and constantly looking for cost-saving measures? Have we obtained all outside funding available to us? And what are we really doing to get new businesses to come to our city and stay here? Are we willing to enforce sales tax laws equally to all businesses and maybe even implement an educational grace period for businesses to come forward and learn what they have to do to become compliant or face dire consequences? Are all members of this council willing to commit to not awarding contracts or ridiculous monetary incentives to their friends and/or major campaign donors? Is this council willing to take a pay cut instead of the raise that Mayor Ta and Councilman Wen think they should get? Again, the very nature of an emergency relief and recovery tax is that it is temporary. Yet this is a permanent proposed tax. If the 1.5 cent portion of the tax is for emergency relief and recovery, then that portion of the measure must have a sunset date. Since voter options aren't possible on the ballot, this council must consider all options today and listen closely to public comments. I care very much about our city, our staff, our great police department, our residents, and our businesses.
One minute warning.
I am suggesting, and will only support a compromise here. Please consider putting a combination tax measure on the ballot. 1.5 cents for a five-year max, and then 1 cent for no more than 10 years after that. Members of this council need to do the right thing or resign from office. Stop pretending you didn't know about the city's financial position until Monday's meeting. Put a reasonable tax measure on this year's ballot and let the voters decide.
I think your time expired.
Represent everyone in the city equally. No, it hasn't. Look at the timer.
He still has. He still has time.
God, excuse me. Represent everyone in the city equally. And finally, hire a qualified and strong city manager, not Q-TI, who can actually help us survive the bad times and put us on a path to success for our future. Do not interrupt me. I had time left, Mayor Ta. Thank you.
Okay, now's the time for any last speakers to raise your hand. Otherwise, our last speaker is Camilla Overbeek.
Hi, Christine, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, mayor and council. The people of this city have trusted you to do right by them. We, the residents, are asking, and actually, we're begging for the right to vote on this tax. Your failure to do that will rob us of our most precious gift, our most precious right. A no vote or an abstention will show that you are placing your political aspirations above the rights and needs of the residents you are supposed to serve. I would also say that if you fail to vote to place this on this year's ballot, the first salaries and benefits that should be cut are those of the mayor and council. Residents should not have to pay individuals who fail to lead and represent their constituents. That's all.
At this time, I have no further speakers.
Mayor and Christine, before we do the question, I'd like to comment. I think that your.
Your microphone.
Charlie, your microphone. City clerk, do we have any other speaker?
No, I do not have other.
All right, so I close all communication. And first, I'd like to thanks all the members from the community. Really, thanks for your time. You participate in a meeting, and you raise your concerns, you ask questions, and you let us know what you think. The reason I have the meeting, the reason I have the meeting today, because for the last few days, after Monday meeting, I received email, or received call from many people. And I believe that I'm really fair person. A lot of people, many people, staff, members from the community, email me. They want to have another special meeting. And I was willing to schedule another special meeting. That's why, that's why we have the meeting today. I appreciate all the comment, but for a few comment that I not appreciate. One of the common make by a business person, mentioning about Vietnamese, non-Vinamilks. I believe five of us here, we really care for the city, even though I do not agree with a few member on a council. However, I believe that, you know, all of us here, we spend our time and we read the staff, we read the staff report. We're willing to spend our time here to continue to engage, continue to discuss all the radical issue for the future of our city. And for the vote abstain, last meeting, I never question any council member how to abstain in any issue. I believe the last two years, a few council member abstain on many issue, and I respect them. Abstain, yes or no? Not either way, member of the city council, we vote. The way I abstain, the reason why I abstain, four years ago, the past city council arrayed to put a measure on a ballot. We respect the resident of the city. We allow everyone to vote. Four years ago. And we put a sunset for six year. Four years ago, and we put a success for six year. The reason why I abstain last meeting, number one, I respect all the member of the city council. I respect the member from the community. Last meeting, as I recall, majority of the member from the community voiced your concerns and really opposed putting a measure on a ballot. That's what I remember correctly. So I abstain because I believe that it's not a right time. I, I think we have another two years. We still have another two years, but that's me. You made this array with whatever I said, whatever I did on the council. However, four years ago, we allow the people to vote. So do not ever mention that we never allow people to vote anything. I think that all member of the city council, we respect the, we respect the voters, we respect the resident. Thank you.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, please.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank you all for speakers that come in and taking your time and coming in and comments today. We value your comments. We, we understand, we hear you loud and clear. But I only take it when you are expressing yourself and you, you express your concern and comment about the issues. I don't appreciate when you are trying to accuse somebody without, without any proof. And if you do so, I would love to have that mentioned, where you get that. Today, at this, at the oral communication, Mrs. Green twice mentioned my name, that I asked for increase in the pay rate. Where did you get that from? I know that I never said that before. I'm here to serve the people. And I know that what I, what I, what I do, I know what. So please, don't try to put words in my mouth or help make people to misunderstand what we are here doing our job. So again, I ask you, if you say something, please accompany with the proof that you have. If you don't, please don't speak soon. That's not right in this communication. So again, thank you very much. That's it.
And I really want to concur with Councilmember Wen, Councilmember Wen and myself. You never mentioned about increase our salary. I got paid only nine hundred per month, and the council member got paid only eight hundred. And the recall election was over, way over. I mean, it's not really helpful when member from the public, you know, try to divide the council. Why did you have to do that in this meeting? It's not helpful. All right, with that, next item, placement of a measure on November 2020 general municipal election ballot related to transaction and use tax. City manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Ho, and Councilman. Thank you once again for the opportunity to ask council to consider putting this one and a half cent recovery measure on the ballot as presented today and allow the public to decide and have a say in this very important matter. Thank you also to those of you that spoke today. We're bringing this before you once again in an effort to provide more clarity and a chance for discussion while we're still in the election deadline. As this decision is important consequential, a second opportunity is welcomed. Again, I know that you all may have different ideas as to why one and a half cent recovery measure may not be the right amount, and this may not be the right time. I'm here to show you that a one and a half cent is the absolute right amount, and now is absolutely the right time. Funding will get us the essential services our community needs and wants. Continuing the one that funding required deep cuts and still be a path to ten to fifty as early as fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The one cent measure was never going to be a fix, and the pandemic has just sped up the timeline. Our current one cent local funding has allowed for the return of basic services, including critical public safety, public arts, and economic development, as well as fiscal stability. I believe we've been good stewards of those monies and have spent the money as represented. We've had audits of the citizens oversight board that can confirm. Not all of our problems have been solved in four years, but we've made headway in pre-COVID. We're looking to add another one million towards streets and possibly up to two million to our reserves. While we were able to increase our revenues by approximately one million last year as part of our cost recovery study, this does not come close to meeting the shortfall that the city's future contractual expenses present, nor the loss of the measure SS funds as of December twenty-twenty-two. At this time, those funds have ranged from twelve to thirteen million a year. I'm going to have Erin Backs, the Acting Finance Director, give a short presentation, and then I will return with the answer as to why now and why waiting until November twenty-twenty-two would be costly.
Thank you. So do we have any, any question or concerns from member on the city council? Did the second special meeting, we discuss the same issue?
I believe Mrs. Backs has a few comments.
Okay, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor Ho, and council members. This is a short presentation to clarify some of the questions raised at Monday's meeting. I'm going to share my screen. Staff requests the city council let the public decide and authorize placement of the extension of the city's current voter-approved local revenue measure on the November twenty-twenty general election ballot at an adjusted one and a half cent rate. The city needs this funding at the one and a half cent rate to ensure vital services are maintained. Council is not deciding whether to support or oppose this one and a half cent recovery measure. The council's role in this process is deciding whether to place the measure on the ballot to allow the voters of Westminster to exercise their right to vote. Current voter-approved funds have stabilized Westminster finances with three years of a balanced general fund budget. The current fiscal year was projected positive as well prior to COVID-19. Four point five million has gone to street improvements. We've created an economic development fund that currently has an unallocated balance of five point two million. These funds recently enabled the council to offer one point one million in low-interest loans to help businesses through the pandemic. We established the Community Preservation Unit that has been critical during the pandemic with business outreach, homeless assistance, and continued cleanup of the city, even when Midway City Sanitation District shut down and would not pick up discards. Established Section 115 trust funds for Pers and other post-employee benefits with a current balance of six million. These funds can be drawn in the future to help pay pension costs and reduce liabilities. Internal service fund balances meet target reserve levels. Adoption of the first active transportation plan. Adoption of the first park and recreational facilities master plan that included an important long-term plan to add parkland to the community and created Project W website to keep citizens informed. In addition, the city clerk and communications team have created the Westminster Insider News newsletter to keep residents up to date on local happenings. Public safety is seventy-five percent of our general fund budget. With the help of Measure SS, we have been able to obtain a close to full hiring status in our police force, add several new special assignments, and recruit lateral police officer transfers. We have added a second K-9 unit. Paco and Ranger are loved by the community. One homeless liaison officer, and we're adding a second this week. A school resource officer, a dedicated detective to the DEA task force, which will generate revenue with asset forfeiture funds, two motor officers, and the Citizens Academy. With the addition of specialized assignments in a near-full police force, we were able to keep our crime rate low compared to surrounding cities. This year, we did see a small five percent increase in crime due to a spike in countywide auto thefts. However, many surrounding cities have seen rate increases in the double digits. A second or a secured local funding source at the future needed rate of one and a half cent will help keep our crime rates low and provide the community services our residents have become accustomed to. When we have lower staffing levels and position cuts, our officers are only able to respond to 911 calls. All other special assignments, like the homeless liaison officers, K-9 units, school resource officer, DEA task force, and community outreach projects will no longer exist with even the cuts needed to continue at the one cent rate. Several ongoing issues will continue to be a concern for this city. First and most importantly, there is very little revenue that the city can generate that the state and county can't take. There are currently several proposed legislative bills that will regulate and limit the amount the city can recover for our costs for development projects within the city. If approved, these bills will increase our costs, regulate our development, and limit our ability to recover costs. In some cases, the state can fine us if they want to. The state and county even get a portion of all parking and traffic violations the city issues. Westminster has been affected by the fiscal impacts of the coronavirus pandemic with additional costs and lost revenue. Not only has the city been hit hard, but our local businesses and residents are feeling the pain of the pandemic with lost jobs and reduced or no business. Even during this pandemic, the state is taking local funds with the deferral of sales and property tax revenue. Sales tax deferral is currently estimated at three point two million. Additionally, the COVID pandemic has made it very clear the city needs to be prepared for other potential catastrophes like a natural disaster and continue to put funds into reserves for their use in emergencies. Projected four point six million deficit in twenty-one, twenty-two, even with Measure SS, local funding measure. When local funding expires, additional cuts in the amount of twelve to thirteen million per year will be needed. Service levels will drop sharply, and high-quality employee retention and attraction will be very challenging in the face of layoffs. The city council has identified a number of initiatives it would like to pursue, including addressing and preventing homelessness, helping the business computer, community improve parks, and responding to residents. Most of these services and activities will be unachievable without a one and a half cent revenue measure. We spent a lot of time on this slide on Monday. I have added a few more years to the projection. As you can see in the projections for the loss of measure, loss of the measure, the removal of locally controlled funding would result in deficits of over seventeen million by twenty-three, twenty-four, with no reserves remaining. Bankruptcy and disincorporation would be imminent without drastic cuts to even basic services. By continuing the one cent local measure, the city still faces future deficits of over four million, still requiring cuts to service levels, and potentially leaving the city facing bankruptcy by twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Cuts at this level will include police special assignments, CPU, full and part-time employees, service levels, and community events. We do renewing at a one and a half cent needed future rate would achieve a balanced budget for the foreseeable future and will allow for continued services at the level we have achieved with Measure SS, as well as additional funding to put towards recovery, infrastructure, and community priorities. Most of the city's general fund costs are contractual obligations like OCFA and employee costs. Service contracts could be cut to provide a lower level of service like animal shelter services, ambulance services, and park maintenance. However, with the majority of the budget in employee costs, there would be layoffs. Employee cuts to address a four million deficit would be approximately thirty-two full-time employees. We have two hundred thirty-six authorized positions. This is based on an average cost per full-time employee and is, in addition, to the positions frozen in the twenty-twenty-one budget. We have a hundred nineteen part-time employees, which would have to be cut first. Public safety is seventy-five percent of the budget, resulting in three point four million in police cuts or approximately twenty-one employees based on the cost of the average sworn officer and the fact that OCFA contract is fixed. To address the seventeen million in cuts described earlier, we would need to cut approximately a hundred twenty employees, which would include eighty police employees based on the same average employee method. Westminster has one of the lowest property tax shares among Orange County cities. Our residents pay the same property tax rate as everyone else, but less of the revenue comes back to the city. The only cities lower than Westminster are structural fire fund cities, meaning they don't pay for fire services out of their budget. Our seven percent is six point eight million dollars and is our second largest source of revenue in the general fund. The percentage the city of Westminster receives in property tax is a perfect example of the state taking money when it is available. Pre-Prop thirteen, city set their own property tax rates, and the nineteen seventies city council set a low rate in Westminster, trying to survive on less. However, once Prop thirteen was passed, all property owners now paid one percent. But Westminster was locked in at a lower share permanently. As you can see in the pie chart, schools get the majority of the property tax paid in the city. This doesn't mean our schools get more money, just that the state has less to, has to give them less. County agencies are the second highest allocation. Midway City Sanitation District's allocation is only three percent lower than the Westminster General Fund's seven percent. Even after Prop thirteen locked the city's low share, the state came back and took even more property tax money with the so-called E-Rough shift. The state has a long history of taking money from cities when they have a shortfall. We all remember the loss of redevelopment, which was a thirty million dollar hit to our city, twelve million of which impacted the general fund directly. Right now, the state revenue and taxation code states that the local portion of sales tax may not exceed two percent. Currently, OCTA has secured a half a percent. Our current local support measure has secured one percent but will sunset in two years. When taxes are established by outside agencies, we lose control of the taxes that our residents pay. Again, outside agency taxes are paid for by our residents, but the use of these funds are decided by an outside board, not our city council. Extending the measure to the needed future rate will secure local control of these funds and present or prevent outside agencies from assessing taxes. Local measures are common among cities in California. This slide shows the surrounding cities with local measures. I have added Long Beach and Lakewood to the list, where our residents are known to shop. Please note the tax rate of ten point two five percent in our neighboring cities. This is one percent higher than we are recommending. Currently, two hundred sixty-three individual, individual cities have enacted local revenue measures. Voters in several additional cities are considering similar sales tax measures on the November twenty-twenty ballot. By law, no measure proceeds can be taken by the state. This is the proposed ballot language. To protect Westminster's local finances, disaster preparedness, property values, local job programs, prevent cuts to 911 emergency response, police, firefighters, paramedic, gang, drug prevention, street repair, address homelessness, and provide other general city services, shell and ordinance extending the existing voter-approved sales tax in an adjusted one and a half percent rate until ended by voters, providing estimated nineteen million annually, requiring independent audits, oversight. All funds locally controlled be adopted. In summary, current local-controlled funding is set to expire soon as the impacts of COVID-19 put the city in an even more challenging financial position. Our financial forecast is dire without a secure local revenue measure. Staff recommends the city place an extension of the current local voter-approved funding on the ballot for voter consideration at the one and a half cent rate to avoid cuts to vital local services like police, ensure the city is able to respond to the current pandemic and future emergencies, assist local businesses in recovery, and address and prevent homelessness. Staff further recommends that all accountability provisions, including citizen oversight, be retained.
You, Erin. Why not wait until November twenty-twenty-two? There are several reasons why now is not the right time. We are, why now is the right time? We are in the middle of a pandemic. Now more than ever, we need our first responders and the ability to help our small businesses. Without this funding, we will need to begin winding down as we prepare for the expiration of Measure SS, as was, as we must always be prudent with our budget. It will mean the layoffs and deep cuts that Erin mentioned in her presentation. Once again, the one percent extension will still require cuts and leaves no money for streets and economic development. Services will require cutting. Based on everything we know today, the one and a half rate will be sufficient to meet our needs, not only currently, but into the foreseeable future. By delaying a vote in November twenty-twenty, we would not bring this back to the voters until November twenty-twenty-two. By that time, we'll have experienced cuts over the next two years, and we will not be able to put any funds toward our community beyond what we could hope to get from the state and federal governments. And this time that help does not appear to be coming. We're going to be need funding for and our essential workers to help with recovery. In addition, a vote in November twenty twenty two would be best result in a lawsuit. Would at best result in a loss of a quarter of a year in receipts as the measure would not become effective until April twenty twenty three. And at worst, a loss of funds until another vote could take place until in November twenty twenty four. Much like in twenty sixteen when the community was given the opportunity to let their voices be heard, the same needs to happen today. We're taking this, we're talking about significant cuts, cuts and changes to the services measure SS has afforded them. The community needs to have a voice in this important and consequential decision. Therefore, I'm asking the council consider putting this one and a half cent recovery measure on the ballot as presented today and allow the public to decide and have a say in the future of their city. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. We appreciate your report. Council member. This is your time.
This is Councilmember Contreras. I have a question. I mean, I, I one want to thank those that showed up today to share their concerns on this item for us. I do understand this is a trying time for our community during this pandemic. And a lot of people are hurting, businesses are hurting. And I, 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 I hear the mayor comment that we do have two more years, so I'd understand. I just feel that, you know, from our last meeting and today, I still think not much is not much to me sounds like it's changed. I think the urgency is obviously here. Now we're our back is against the wall and we didn't have the time to explore other options. So, you know, I, I think to me, I, I think we should, we should consider extending our current, actually, I would say renewing our current sales tax temporarily and like the mayor said, in two years, you know, if you want to come back for the other half percent, I mean, that could also be a possibility. But I think, you know, we need to, this is a tough time for, for all of us and we want to continue the certain level of service. But so I believe, you know, one cent would be at least allowing the voters to the opportunity to decide and to extend it while, while we continue to explore other options in two years, like the mayor mentioned. I think would be something we should consider.
Thank you. Any other council member?
Yes, I'd like to get my input. First of all, you, you know that I voted, I respect Paul comments and we think that, you know, even though it's two more years, the mayor said, but I think it's, it's right for us to go ahead and and put the measure in for the people to to vote. However, I know that we are living the time that the pandemic and it's affect everybody. And I also heard the concern that, you know, the, the city is going to be in, in a lot of problem if we don't do this. You know, and I, I heard people said, yes, please put that measure for one point five percent. And the, on the other side, I heard that no, please don't. No, we are trying to, you know, survive at this time and why should do that for, you know, to us? You know, there are plus and minus, you know, we have, we as a representative for, you know, for the city, we have to hear both side of, of the alley. So what I see that, you know, at this point here, I, I agree with director, I mean, a council member contrast that, you know, we should extend, put it on a measure to extend the or renew the one percent, one cent. And the only thing that I want to make sure that I don't know that you have stated that yet, but I'd like to put it with the sunset for ten years. So that way, in within the ten years, we and the voters have a chance to revisit. And at that time, we can look at the economy, whether we can increase or we can go the other way. You know, we have a chance to do that. So I don't know that you have make a motion for that, but I'd like to go ahead and, and state my motion to have the one percent one cent extended and with the, with the sunset for ten year. That, that's my motion.
And if I, if I could.
Second motion.
Let me just clarify the, as stated on the agenda, it's, it would be adopting a resolution at that one percent. I'd, you have to authorize the city attorney to make some changes to that resolution to reflect the one percent. And it's also introduction of the ordinance for first reading. That's part of the requirement for this. So I would just ask that you include that in your motion.
Yes, please. And I believe that we have, I am in motion and I believe that councilman Contreras also second it already, right?
Mayor Ty, you're muted. So we have the motion on the floor, but is that without a sunset or with the success? I did not hear that.
It was as a sun with a sunset for ten years.
I have a question for county, for city council, council. I don't know if Chris Justin or Jones. You know, again, going back to the comments we made today from some of the residents and Mayor Todd's comment about two years, you know, and, and about, you know, if, if this moves forward with a ten year sunset, any time after this pandemic has cleared within, you know, two years, maybe next election cycle, we could, then again, the council has the option to place the another item with changes, correct? This is not set in stone.
Correct. Yes.
And yes, but the increase in tax rate could no longer be there, the ability to increase that, that might be gone.
Um, city, could you repeat that?
I think as has been discussed by staff and at the last meeting, there's a maximum amount that the city could assess. Right now, there's the, that gives you the ability to go up to one point five, but that might be lost if the county or another district takes that funds.
I should for that comment. I mean, I, I mean, the state does, the state's going to do what they're going to do. They'll find a way to get us anyway. I mean, I don't know about this. You know, do, someone's going to take it. I mean, I just, it sounds to me, either way, they, they're going to do what they're going to do. I don't know. We don't have any facts or, right? I mean, unless you know something, we don't.
No, we, we don't know. We still, based upon like actions in LA county where they did impose a homeless tax by the county. The county does have the ability to identify a specific project or concern and impose a tax. If they do so, then the concern is the fact that that limits the city's ability to raise the tax.
I, I want to know that, why didn't we consider that? Did we consider that at the time that we, we proposed for tax increase last time, four years ago? That's number one question. Number, second question is, why didn't we talk about it in the staff report? If I recall correctly, that we did not talk anything about it until the last meeting and somebody brought it up. Why? I don't, if it's such an important thing that we have to consider, why we have to wait until this last minute to, 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 to bring it up?
Well, I, I will say this, I don't know why we waited so long. But let me indicate to you regarding the six year, the original staff report six years ago was for an indefinite period. It was the council in their deliberations that elected to impose a six year term. So that was a council direction based upon their actions six years ago, right down four years ago, to impose a six year cap. As far as the delays, I just think that was eternally a decision made. I don't know.
All right. So any other council members? So right now, we have on the floor. Continue with one percent, right? And correct, am I right?
No, ten year.
Ten years and said.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can we get clarification? Is that ten years from the existing expiration in twenty twenty two? Or is that ten years from now? So would this be expiring in twenty thirty or in twenty thirty two?
My understanding, based on Mr. Contreras's comments, he was discussing a renewal. So based upon a renewal, it would be twenty thirty two.
Okay, thank you.
Who was that?
That was Mark Mandel, who's our special legal counsel, who's an expert on sales tax measures.
Okay.
So right now, we have the, we have the motion on the floor where one percent for ten years sunset from twenty twenty two.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
And did we have a second?
We did.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. I'd like to do the roll call vote and I will call our council member. A council member win?
Yes.
Council member win?
Yes.
Council member, oh. Council member though?
No.
Okay. Council member Contreras?
Yeah.
Vice mayor?
You're muted.
No.
And myself, I abstain because, you know, I think we have another two years.
So where we are, is there any other motions to be made?
Yes. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion for one and a half percent and sunset in twenty years.
Okay, so there's another motion from Vice Mayor Hope for twenty years.
And I'd like to, to explain, if I may.
Please.
We must understand if you, if you could, I mean, I know we've brushed on this information, but redevelopment money, it started in nineteen eighty two. That was in the eighties. And by the time it was taken away, that was, I believe, staff correctly, if I'm wrong, I believe that was two thousand and twelve. And at the time, it was thirty million dollars we were getting yearly. From nineteen eighty two until two thousand and twelve, we received thirty million dollars. Okay, from the thirty million dollars, twelve million dollars of that money went into general funds for services, for staffing, for staffing to provide services for our city, for our citizens. Our measure SS dollars came in about, at about twelve to thirteen million dollars. And now we've got the recession, we've got the pandemic, the recession looming, and I can tell you in the last three years, what happened to that money before we move on. The first year, we only got one quarter of that money. And we were still short two point, two point nine million dollars. The second and the third year, we were able to put away two million in reserve and a million towards our streets. So I'm trying to, I, I mean, I painted a big picture for myself. Today, I want to shed light on what happened back then. It is not this council's fault that we're asking for one and a half percent in sales tax. So remember, and I know that that was stated a few times, nine point two five percent is the sales tax cap rate. It's capped at nine point two five. And the state takes seven point two five, leaving us two percent. But mind you, point five percent was taken by measure M by OCTA, leaving us one point five percent. One percent is currently, we're getting from the SS measure, the point five percent remaining. The citizens wants it. So I hear from the Lew and Edwards group, we hired an independent company, a survey, they did the survey, sixty percent of our citizens said they don't mind. They don't mind the one and a half percent sales tax. I'm saying to my colleagues, we are not advocating. We have no right to increase sales tax. That right belongs to the people. I would like to plead with our colleagues, my colleagues, to please vote yes. And I believe, we don't want to go back and forth. We don't want to lose that last point five percent to the state, to the county or to another, another, maybe another OCTA, another increase. I don't know what's going to happen, but our citizens, I hear that our citizens want it. So I advocate. And so today I would like to vote yes, to place this one point five percent on the ballot for our people to decide. And I'd like, and I, I've listened. Thank you so much for all, all those who came out to speak. I'd like to put on a sunset clause of twenty years. So that would be my compromise and I think that is really fair and I think I am. I'd like to repeat that we have no right, none of the council members has the right to increase sales tax. We would just, we should do the right thing and put it on the ballot for the people to.
All right. Thanks, Vice Mayor Hope. So now we have another motion on the floor with one point five percent and twenty years sunset.
Correct. And for the record, that includes the same language with respect to allowing the city attorney to make modifications as you've just indicated and also includes the introduction of the ordinance.
Correct. All right, we have a motion on the floor, council. All right, we have a motion on the floor, council. All right, so I don't hear the second, that means the motion failed. Am I correct, uh, city?
Yes, motion failed. Now, if there was any other motions, if not, we have no further business.
Councilmember Contreras, I mean, um, again, I, I could, again, I believe that, I understand this is a difficult time, and we're all, again, this is the eleventh hour, and we're, we're, um, edging up in a tight place, and I know that there's disagreement on the one point five, whether it's, um, indefinite or twenty years. Um, that, that's very clear. Again, and I understand a lot of reasons why people might feel that way. Um, again, I still, I think last meeting, we were, we're very close, and I believe that we can uh, reunite and focus on what we know we need to do is to give our residents the opportunity to decide, um, the, this, the extension of the current uh, sales tax measure that was passed four years ago, because we, we have seen the benefits of that, of that measure. We've been able to, to, uh, level our city and, and provide services, and I, I still believe that there's, there is still appetite here for the extension of that measure. So I'd like to make a motion to, again, um, my item is to renew the current measure um, until ended by voters at that one percent to continue to protect our essential services.
So we have another motion proposed by Councilmember Contreras, continue with one percent and no sunset. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct. We need a motion, we need a second.
And let the voters decide.
It's mean one percent with no sunset.
Correct.
Symbol like that.
So we, we need a second to move forward.
I second that.
All right, we have the motion and a second on the floor. Okay, so I'm going to call, uh, council member win. Council member win, are you still here?
Hold on, uh, yes. I'm still here.
So, the motion at a second on a floor, one percent with no sunset.
I hear you, I hear you. Give me a second.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Doe?
No.
Okay, councilmember Doe, no, okay, councilmember Contreras?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And myself, I abstain because I think that we have another two years. All right, is there any other motion? Or any, anything else? If not, I adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, the meeting, meeting is therefore adjourned.
All right, so if we don't have anything else, the meeting adjourned. The next meeting will be August twelfth.
Mayor.
Okay, councilmember Contreras, yeah.
Again, what is before us is, wait, again, to me, it's, this all comes down to good public policy. We know we need this measure, we know it's made a difference in our essential services when it comes to our local police department or senior services. Um, we've done a lot of great work over the years. Community trusted us with the opportunity to provide, um, the revenue we needed to, again, um, protect our essential services and our employees and not look at mass layoffs. Again, because of the low tax revenue that we get, I, I, I believe that we want to protect that, and I, I hear staff that if we wait for two years, that, that, that could, you know, affect us. And, you know, again, I want to give it one last, uh, I still believe that there could be compromise on the, at this table. We were very close last time around, and so I want to give one, one last attempt here. Um, I know that the, uh, sun, not having a sunset is, is not palatable, based on my last motion, and ten years won't work. So I'd like to make another motion to, um.
Sergio, it's, it, unfortunately, uh, the mayor has, uh, adjourned the meeting, and Councilmember Doe has already left the meeting.
All right, so the meeting already adjourned, yeah.
We have a quorum.
But the mayor, the mayor adjourned the meeting.
I already adjourned a meeting, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.